Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is a huge day, July the 2nd, 2019, almost the 3rd, if I'm wrong. Appreciate you being with us today. We'll start out with our first item under New Business Presentation, a request for LORR and Sewer Authority to donate toward construction of the new Senior Center. General Manager Brooke Anderson's going to make that presentation. Come on up there. And Jim Conley.
Thank you very much. We are here on behalf of the Board of Directors for LORR and Sewer Authority and the county has been working for the past several months on constructing a new senior center. In addition to the senior center that's out there, we've always enjoyed the good work and relationship with Dawn and her staff. They did a phenomenal job and we're grateful for their work and we want to contribute to the expanded mission of the senior center and be a community partner with the county in the new senior center. And so on behalf of LORR and Sewer Authority, we would like to present to the county a $10,000 check for the construction of the new senior center.
Anybody got any questions, Mr. Brooke? I don't think we've ever turned down any money before.
Do we have to approve this?
Well, we can do that right now.
I want to approve it now.
We can do that right now. So if there's some desire, we'll get a motion from the board to accept this donation.
I can move.
Motion from Commissioner Fossel.
Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Satterfield. Discussion. Hearing done, please vote. And that is approved 4-0 and we will gladly accept your check.
Okay, she's making the motion, I'm going to give it to her.
Give it to her. And that'll work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was good just for a few seconds.
Thank you all. Next up, we have a presentation request for Sheriff's Office, compensation Sheriff Jeff Johnson. Cheers.
Good afternoon, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to be with the County Chair. Some of our issues we need to make sure this thing will work first. Very good. Please interject or stop or ask me if you need clarification on anything. I'm going to try not to keep you too long, but we do have some bullet points. We do have some things that I hope to be a little bit eye-opening for our commission. Again, when we talk about issues, when we talk about critical issues, first thing I'd like to say this, and I say this with some of our fire representatives in the audience, this is not about Sheriff's Office Fire. Those men and women deserve, as your sheriff, as county resident, I'm in full support of you taking care of our firefighters and our EMTs and our paramedics. I know the sacrifices that they make. I know the schedules they work and I know what's required of them because I've been there. For those who may not know, I was a firefighter at one time, paying my firefighter certification as a young man. I just went a different route. So Chief Thompson and the staff, I appreciate you and our community and I certainly support your endeavors to take care of your staff. But Board, I'm here tonight to talk to you about our law enforcement officers. And I don't mean this to be contentious and I don't mean this to be confrontational, but rather it's my hope that this would be very constructive in nature. As you can see, that insufficient staffing is greatly attributable to lower pay. I'm going to show you tonight some attrition rates for the Sheriff's Office. I'm going to show you tonight some stats. I've also pulled some things out from some recent articles with 18, 19, and that general area. You'll see there a quote from one of the particular articles, this pay is not surprising, a huge motivator in officer attrition. As we've talked a lot about in the past, men and women get into law enforcement to serve. They get into it typically single, typically unmarried, typically with no kids, but then these lights gets in the way and they realize that they have to make a living. They realize that they have to provide for retirement, they have to provide for their families. And that's where we find ourselves at today, is that young men and women get into this and desire to serve, but people, agencies, municipalities are taking our money from us, are taking our officers from us. As we've talked about in the past, the responsibility of any government is to provide for the safety and security of our people. That's what we're here for. That's what you're here for and that's what I'm here for. Now, we'll say this, the figures provided in this presentation, approximately, they have changed, they will change, they continue to change. One thing, let's look at the history of it a little bit. Dawson County has a history of leaving personnel to higher-paying agencies. We know this. I pulled up something from 2014. It was a former sheriff and a quote in there says, "The department is losing experienced deputies to nearby counties." And there's a link there and I encourage you to look at that article when you read that article. I know that at least two members, three members on this board at the time, or two, at least two members on the board at the time. So this is not new. This is not in response to what fire department did, asking for higher pay. We had, in early 2007, I reached out to board members excluding Commissioner Satterfield because he was not on the board at the time, to share with you some issues that we were having in the Sheriff's Office concerning pay, concerning staffing. We've been doing this, we've been fighting this battle for at least two and a half years now. Not only that, as you can see by what the headlines read, even the former commissioner, even the former sheriff had the same issues that we're having today. So this is not a new issue. This is not something that's panned up overnight. When we look at our competitive pay, less available candidates is creating a public safety crisis. Now, as I met with the Commissioner and the Chair, we talked about what is a crisis? And that's what I hope to be able to paint a picture for you tonight, is that with our staffing, where it's at, there's not adequate as it is to begin with, helping with our low pay, helping with our attrition rates, and I would tell you that we do have crisis, that we're in a crisis right now. The strong economy, as you may not know, or you may not, hurts public safety and I think that applies across the board. Anytime men and women can go outside, make higher pay, make higher wages for state schedules, weekends off, holidays off, all those things that you men and women in public safety sacrifice for, I think they're going to go that route and obviously the economy reflects that. There's higher paying private sector in Florida, increased personal risk. I want to share some stats with you tonight that shows that law enforcement is a dangerous profession. We're not just going to talk about officers killed in the line of duty, we're going to talk about officers assaulted and injured. And I hope that each one of you knows that we're not a stranger to that in Dawson County. It has happened and it will happen again. We talked about increased public scrutiny. Law enforcement officers today are under the microscope more than ever. Why in the world does some young man or woman want to get into this nowadays? It's kind of still astounding with the low pay, the hours, the sacrifices that they make, with the public scrutiny that's out there. It really astounds me that we even have men and women that are still dominant badge and wear a gun. All of these factors contribute to less qualified candidates. I want to share with you some numbers, but hopefully you're going to be very eye-opening with that. As any state with a fire department, we've been forced to reduce our standards and order as fast as we can. Used to be five years on marijuana. If a candidate used marijuana, within five years they were excluded. And it's just not Dawson County, it's across the board. One of the titles down there, one of the headlines departments for relaxing old age standards for accepting recruits, like education and prior reviews, to try to attract more people to their ranks. We're doing everything we can to recruit men and women to Dawson County and unfortunately we're having to reduce our standards to persuade them, to encourage them to find acceptable candidates to come in. Again, nothing new in Dawson County, this is across the board. Low pay adversely affects our ability to recruit experienced candidates as well as more qualified candidates. When we talk about recruiting, and this is the absolute truth, we've had employees come in, turn in applications for inquiry, and we tell them what our starting pay is, they turn around and leave, but walk out the door on us. When they get to the point of coming in for the conditional offer, they come in for the board interview, they have to turn around and leave when they find out how much we make. And that comes very clear in just a few minutes when I share with you some of our surrounding agencies what they're paying. Qualified candidates. Dawson County does not perceive experienced qualified candidates normally. Those that do typically come with some type of look, some type of bags, they're trying to get away from another situation. And often times that's eliminated during the background process with it. We do not have the ability to offer experienced qualified people more money. We have our starting pay and that's what it is. Low pay affects our ability to be proactive. There's not a law enforcement officer in this room sitting back and figuring that he wants to wait for a call to come out. He or she wants to be proactive. They want to enforce the laws. They want to stop crime before crime happens. When we have young men and women that are just learning, they're having to be trained. When I have to take a corporal who is experienced, who has time and tenure, to pull them off to teach and recruit basics such as report writing, teaching them how to go into the computer system, enter a report, teaching them how to log evidence, this is taking away from our ability to be proactive in our community. Quote there, "Besides the direct screening and training costs, there's lower productivity of new hires when they're trained." We know that. I think I've shared that many times and I know it with the Chair. When you get out of the academy, you know just about enough to get yourself in trouble. You have to be taught, you have to be trained. In 11 weeks, they cram a lot of information in you. Fortunately, you did get your certification, but there's still a lot to learn. You have to learn to be a police officer. You have to learn to be a firefighter. You have to learn, and typically that comes through experience. Increased liability, obviously we know that when we put a new officer on the street, he or she's going to be more prone to making mistakes. Does that increase our liability? Does that increase our potential for liability? Absolutely it does. But all these factors again, with our low pay, that's where we're finding ourselves. Now this is one, kind of say it all. When we look at our competitors, we're not competing with Love County Compete. We're not competing with Gilbert. We're not competing with Piddings. We're not competing with White County. We're competing with our neighbors to the south, just as they are competing with their neighbors to the south. Precy County competes with North Fulton. When you look at these salaries here, it's kind of staggering because what I've done, I've been able to compile with you, that Dawson County averages approximately $7,685 less than our competitors' starting pay. Now, if that's taken those agencies that you see there, we've lost Alpharetta, we've lost Unwood, we've lost Precy County, we've lost Hall County. When you take those general areas and you combine their starting salaries, now, understand that this is their starting salary. This is for a police officer, a certified police officer with zero experience. Down there, you can make more money dependent upon your qualifications. That's going to come into play in just a little bit as well. When we talk about starting salaries, this is somebody that's fresh out of the academy, somebody that has certification, has zero experience. They can go to neighboring Precy County and make, they can go to neighboring Precy County and make several thousand dollars more. They can go to Precy County and make $44,791 annually as compared to our $37,017 a year. That is significant. When we talk about the location, when we talk about how close Precy County is to us, this is who we're competing with. This is who's taking our employees from us. When I recently reached out to an email in early '17 to the board, I attached some numbers for you from Precy County. Isn't that a reference? One of our previous sergeants, who's no longer here. What I put in that letter to you was that right now Precy County or she's looking at Precy County. Well, Precy County took them from us and it continues to be employed down there today. They're taking our people, they're taking our investment, they're taking our money. And I think that we can fix that. I think with the right pay, I think we can certainly minimize it. Again, point takeaway from this slide here is that these were the starting minimum salaries. Our men and women, and we'll share some more stats with you in just a second, could go down there and make a whole lot more than starting pay at Precy County. In our patrol component alone, 30 positions. Now, when I talk about positions, I'm not talking about frozen positions. These are frozen positions that were taken alone before I was here. In our patrol component alone, there are 30 positions. There are 21 deputies and two supervisors with a combined total of 142 years' experience who do not make the entry level pay of neighboring Precy and Hall County. 23 out of 30 with 142 years' experience that do not make the starting pay of Precy or Hall County. I can tell you, Board, that they could leave us today and go to Precy or Hall, which is just 15, 20 minutes away, and make substantially more money, have substantially better retirement. And so I'm asking you, as the fire chief did, I'm pleading with you, let's take an opportunity to fix this. The few remaining staff or supervisory staff whose pay exceeds, just exceeds the starting salary and does not compare to their counterparts. I received an email about three something this afternoon, so I was not able to hit it to you. I'll be glad to know that. The numbers are astounding when you look at it. Well, I wrote a few of them down. And I'm kind of hesitant to even share this with my staff in here. Deputy Sheriff Toots, a certified law enforcement officer in Precy County with one-year experience, makes $45,685. A deputy first class, again, I'm not sure what that encompasses, that's some training, $47,122 for one-year experience. A corporal with one-year experience, $55,495. A sergeant with one-year experience, $70,610. A lieutenant with one-year experience, $78,667. So again, it's just not our starting pay, Board, it's across the board. We've been able to fill, we've been able to try to fill in some gaps over the years, but we're still well off. In our criminal investigations component, all investigators, excluding supervisory, specialized assignments, some of our local investigators are compensated less than the starting pay of Precy and Hall County. These are men and women that typically have a little bit more experience. Their experience ranges from five to 12 years, but knowing that they could leave tomorrow and go to Precy or Hall County. And again, they're not going to another agency to make starting pay. They're going to another agency and make far above that, to take our training that we've invested in, to take after their experience that they gained here to make more money. What is public safety crisis? The detention component relies on the greatest gap. Why is that? A lot of agencies are taking, they're doing away with detention officer titles, they're doing away with that destination. Precy County, for example, starting, they consider a deputy sheriff appointed in Precy County, they start at $41,906. That's zero experience, that's zero certification, that is just a young man or woman starting off. Again, a large majority of our staff can go to Precy County and make well over this. Even if they went as a deputy sheriff appointed, which is basically an uncertified detention officer, there's still probably a majority of them going to be raised. In our detention, again, we talked about the greatest gap, neighboring Precy County pays $9,516 more than our detention officer made. Hall County makes $10,154 more than our detention officer made. We talked about recruiting. We can't compete with that. A man or woman wants to go 15 minutes down the road, they're going to make 10 more thousand dollars a year. That's tough. Our 911 center and our Sheriff's Services component are exactly the same. This is a public safety crisis. We talked about national attrition, 10.8% is some of the latest that I've received, with the southeast being roughly around 14%. Since 2012, I went back several years just to give you a better understanding here, this has been an ongoing thing with Dawson County. Dawson County's averaged over 16 separations annually. This translates to an approximate 14% attrition rate. So that's very much in line with what the southeast is. Failing to be competitive in compensating our public safety professionals is resulting in increased risk for our community. When we have to take our time and our resources, and I'll give you for example, when an application comes in, and I'm going to give you some numbers on applications in just a few minutes, it doesn't just come in and go to the file, it has to be handled, it has to be gone through. We've got to make sure that their birth certificate's there, that their deponess's there, that everything's filled out as it needs to be. The ladies from the HR have to take that application and again run in the background, the criminal history, the credit histories, these other things. He or she has to set up a convenient board. We have a screening board or a panel. When they come in, we have to pull officers, typically your higher command staff, just because they've been here, they've done that, they have a better feel for individuals. We convene panels, we have to pull them in and interview them. Again, I'm going to give you numbers of how many we're doing, how many's even making it through that process. But we're spinning our wheels, we're having, we're having to devote so much time and money and manpower to these positions that's taken away from our county. Background investigations, these are lengthy. When we have to go, when we do job checks, when we have to go back and look at personnel files, we have to make sure, we may have to go talk to neighbors. We have to compile all the information. There's a lot to this that goes into a background investigation. It's very labor intensive. We have to cover the overtime, we have to cover the cost reduced when we're down support staff, even if we hire somebody tomorrow, we know that there's an evaluation period, we know there's a training period, we know that the first two weeks is going to be devoted to nothing but the basics, the NIPS training, the officer safety training. For the first two weeks, we're not getting anything out of it. We still have vacancies, but we're still investing in them, as a board, as a county, we're still investing in our employees. We have to cover their vacancies. When you look at cost of attrition, in 2018, we had 110 applications, 110 applicants in 2018. Out of those 110, 55 went to background. This was after the HR got hold of the files, went through them and ran the documentation, compiled the files. This was after it went in front of our board for evaluation. 55 of that 110, 50% went or were approved to go to a background investigation. Out of that 55, roughly 21 were hired. So again, 110 applications, 55 went to background. Between 55 and 21, there was 34 individuals eliminated from the hiring process. Again, our pay is a huge contributor to this because that's who we're getting. Since 2012, Dawson County SO, or 2014, has received and processed 381 applications. Out of those applications, 212 were approved before we get on to the background investigations. Out of those, 117 were hired, less than a third of our original applicants successfully completed the hiring process. And that has a lot to do with what we pay. We've had internal discussions a lot. Dawson County is the right place to work. We have the best equipment that we've ever had. We drive in the best fleet that we've ever had. But we give them, we encourage them, we motivate them, but at the end of the day, when we're talking about comparisons with these dollar amounts, we've got to close the gap. Reassigning the staff to handle recruitment duties, that's one thing we're finding us now. We're having to reach, we're having to go out and above and beyond, we're having to go job fairish, we're having to do bullet colleges, do everything we can to try to list of folks to come to Dawson County. And unfortunately, that comes to a screeching halt sometimes when they find out our pay is. We have to conduct more interview boards, more background checks, we have more training that we're required to do. We're focused on recruiting and hiring, which attracts and delivering services and keeping our county safe. Additional costs, every time, you think about that 55 that went to background, they might have been eliminated in the psych testing, they might have been eliminated in the polygraph testing, but those are still, we're spending over $400 between psych testing and polygraph testing. And that's money that we don't get back, but we're having to take chances, we're having to. We have candidates, Board, that the board doesn't feel super excited about, but we have to push them on because we need the bodies, we need the help. And that's a bad position for any of us to be in. We talk about decreased services. Again, I hate to be the dead horse, but we have to, it takes time away, even on the street. We have someone that needs to be policing, someone that needs to be preventing crime, we're having to take them out of their role and put them in a trainer's position to handle the basics. And I'm not saying even with pay that you're not going to eliminate that. We never would eliminate that, but I think we can do a big job, I think we can take a huge step in minimizing that. Certified applicants are nearly non-existent. We just cannot get certified applicants in Dawson County. I'm thankful that we've had two or three that have came back to us, that started with us, they know what we're about, they know who we are, but unfortunately, when they find out what our pay is, it just shuts them down. Paying our staff more competitive wage, looking for better recruitment, better retention. It'll also help free us up to actually police and quit focusing so much on administrative duties. Dawson County invests, when you look at a new officer coming through the door, to get them, and again, I'm not talking salary here, I'm talking investment in training, approximately $48,704 by the time you send them to their basic jail school, by the time you train them, by the time you give them their mandatory eight-week FPL training in the jail, by the time you get them to the police academy, by the time you get them certified, or you get them through the field training program, home patrol, Dawson County's investing near $48,000 before they're over $48,000. Considering current staffing levels, where we're at now, we have to pay overtime to cover their vacancies. When we send officers to the police academy, we have to have someone fill that position. If an officer gets back from the academy, the same friends turns around and says, "Well, I'm going to buy your contract, I want you to come and work for us," they will pay part of our salary, they're supposed to pay part of our salary for the time that they spend in the academy, in any bills, in any travel expenses. However, they're not going, Dawson County's not going to recruit that overtime cost that we have to invest in them, send them to the academy. Dawson County's not going to recruit these other costs. It's Dawson County money, but they're certainly reaping the benefits of it. Kind of touched on that there. We do have provisions if someone gets out of the police academy. If we have a man or woman get out of the basic law, the jail school and quit tomorrow, we're not entitled to the niggles. But if they get through the basic law enforcement academy, we can at least recruit salary. Supposed to be able to. Chairman and I have had discussions on that. Agencies are buying out contracts. It's cheaper for an agency to come in and say, "Well, I want to pay Dawson County's salary in bills and training for you to come and work for us." Often times, and y'all know it, Board, that when we hire a jail recruitment grant, they may or may not make it. That's their time, there's trial period to see if law enforcement's for them. It's our time to evaluate them and see if they are going to make it. Y'all know that most mistakes are made by young recruits and cops because they're brand new to it. Those that have got through to the academy, those that have got through patrol are less likely to make those mistakes because they've already been successful in the jail setting. Agencies are buying out contracts, are paying more competitive wage in order to recruit training, more experienced officers. They have the ability to take our staff, they have the ability to take our certified bodies, they have the ability to take those, although they may have zero patrol experience, they know that they have jail experience, they know that they know how to deal with people, they know that they know how to talk with people, they know they take up a better understanding of the law enforcement profession in general, they know they take up a better understanding of state law. It's a win for them. They're taking our people. They're saving on their recruiting costs. If they can go to the academy and graduate, and say, "Come and work for me," how much money and time have they spent in recruiting? They're minimizing their hiring risk because the candidate is established and trained, they're certified at that point. Dawson County's are taking our investment and we're allowing them to do so. They're reducing the level of experience serving our county and our people. Every time someone takes one from us, and we can't sit back on our heels, we have to send people to the academy. We have no choice. And that's where we're at right now, we're ready to wait for bodies in the police academy. We have to, we have to send them there or else our patrol will be, we'll just flatline. We have to send people to the police academy. We have to send people to the police academy. Our most recent four academy graduates, they're ripe for the picking. And I want everybody up there to understand that. They have experience, now they provide certification. And then any of these agencies could come snag them up, make more money. Many of our current staff have obtained and maintained specialties or certifications, whether it's a general instructor, whether it's firearms instructor, defensive tactics, investigations related. We, as a county, invest a lot in our people. These competing agencies know that, they recognize that. When they have an applicant or a candidate that can come to them with certification, with experience, with training, they know that that's a price that they don't have to pay. That's an investment that they don't have to pay. Why? So they can pay a little bit more. Some of our classes, or some of our classes are lengthy. And at the end of the day, when they get back from training, they get a two or four week training class, we want to reap the benefits of that. We're sending them because we want them applying that in Dawson County. But at the end of the day, if they turn around and leave on this after attending a class, we have no recourse. They're taking our people away from us. These other agencies recognize the value of these classes and willing to pay for this certification. And the tough thing is, some of these men and women go for Forsyth County certified, and they are firearms instructor, or they are investigation certified, they know they're going to make more money right out of you. Dawson County's been far too long training facility for others. Couple of other articles there. Hiring police officers is much harder than it used to be. And again, we must evolve and adapt. The board, a lot of places are. If you look at this, this is, I won't take away from anybody, from any position, from anything, I don't care where it is. I believe that men and women deserve paid wages for what they do. One thing I did want this board to understand, and I hope that you do understand, it's an investment on our part for law enforcement officers. It's an investment on our part for firefighters. It's an investment on our part for paramedics and EMTs. The county is investing substantial money to get these people where they need to be in service of our county. As you can see, between 2010 and 2016, this was from a public safety and justice publication. 15.2% for public safety or police as opposed to all other local government. You're investing in these men and women. And I know that's a tough decision to make. But at the end of the day, I think we need to balance what we're investing in our people, what's our cost for our people, what are we going to do to maintain them, to retain them? We talked about staffing. And I'll go back to the May 15, 2000 sheriff's office study, how does this relate to pay? In 2015, we had 25 patrol positions. Again, I'm not talking about patrol positions, I'm talking about positions. 2015 recommended was 29. 2030, we had 30. Now, expanded, four years, we've come up one position, but how did we do that? We done it because we took away from detention. We seen the need, we knew that our call volume was going up, we knew that the need was going up, so we're robbing the computer to pay call. Look at patrol, or look at investigations, there was nine in 15, the study recommended 14, we're at 10. Sheriff's Services, 12 in 15, they recommended 18, and 19, four years later, we're still at 12. Detention 38, recommended positions 57, SR, 19 positions 36. Again, we detracted from there to have supplemental others. Order staffing's killing us. And a lot of that has to do, in the direction of relating to our pay. Currently, we have six other positions in the sheriff's office, and they fall within patrol detention SRO and sheriff's services positions. It's been said, and we've had some discussion about volume per staff. At any given time, we'll have four to five deputies on patrol here in Dawson County, covering 220 square miles, 215. Go for Forsyth County. And I know the volume's more, I know the call volume's more, but you're looking at five, six times the deputies on patrol in Forsyth County as they are here in Dawson County. I do not have the statistics to tell you what their call volume is. But I'm still pretty confident telling you that our deputies run per person just as mean average as Forsyth County does. Besides being a significant financial officer in county, it's a dangerous profession. These men and women deserve, want to be treated with respect, but they deserve a competitive wage. According to FBI statistics, 106 are killed in line of duty in 18, 51 died of the felonious act. Officer down in the moral page reports 163 line of duty deaths during 18. At the time I compiled this, there had been 60 so far, so far this year were 26 by gunfire. According to FBI statistics, law enforcement agencies reported 60,211 officers assaulted in 17. The 18 stats have not come out yet. An officer assaults in 17, 10.1 per hundred sworn officers. It's a dangerous profession. Again, we're not just talking about pay. We're talking about sacrifices that these men and women make. These men and women are committed to Dawson County. And I want to give you just a few examples of what they continue to do, even with the staffing where we're at, even with the pay where we're at. These are things that's coming off our streets. There's a lot of us here, there's a lot of deputies here that have family here, they live here, they have children here. You have children here, you have grandchildren here. These are things that our professionals are doing, these are things that our professionals are taking off the streets. I want you to look at the guns in a lot of these. Drug dealing, violence goes hand in hand. Each and every day, they knock on the door, each and every day, they stop the car. Each and every day, they serve a search warrant. These are the type of things that your law enforcement officers, our deputies, our low-paid, underpaid deputies are putting their life on the line for us. Look at the meth that's coming off our streets. The guns that's coming off our streets. Ladies and gentlemen, we have problems in Dawson County, we have crime in Dawson County. We collectively are responsible for keeping, providing the safety and security of our people. I need your help, the sheriff's office needs your help. Again, need was relevant. These men and women, they've been patient, they've been enduring. They continue to be here. It astounds me sometimes. I don't want to believe, I beg you not to believe, but I also encourage them that the brighter day is coming. If we are going to do something, if we are going to step up and take care of our law enforcement professions, Lord, I need your help. I need you to help me. If I looked at things, I'm going to give you some numbers real quick. What I'm asking you for, I don't think is far-fetched. But if you look at a 15% across the board increase, that would be a total of $665,971. That would put your patrol positions up for $5,000. Again, we know that our starting pace is 39. That would bump starting pay up to about 44, which is still less than our competitors. It's still less, but it's getting us close. Our detention positions, we bumped them to 4,859 dollars, and they start out 32, 390. There's still going to be a gap in detention. But I do hope that the board will consider, you know, there's been a lot of issues over the years with our pay scales, with things that have been done, and it don't seem like there's a whole lot of rhyme and reason and consistency to things. We try to make ends, we try to stretch things where we good, we try to take funds to help folks out, but where are the prices for them? I mean, your officers need your help. With that being said, I'll push.
Questions for the sheriff. I'll start out, it's not a question, but just a comment. Obviously, to be able to attract qualified candidates, you have to be competitive. That thing we talked about a couple of weeks ago in reference to fire department, we'll talk about some more tonight. To get good, qualified people and to keep those people, you have to be competitive. And this county's going to have to be competitive, we're going to have a choice, but to be competitive, if we're going to be able to meet the mandate that we've been charged with, and that is the protection of the people of this great community, which is our number one responsibility. Now, is it easy as saying it? No, it's not that easy to do, you got to find the money. We've got to look at all the different areas that would allow us to get competitive for our public safety personnel. Because it's a critical factor. It's the majority of the people that we hire that work here. And the county, the majority of those people are in public safety, of the full-time people that we have. And so it's important that we look at, not only pay, that we look at this in a holistic package. When we look at salary, we have to look at retirement, we have to look at all the benefits that we offer to people that will make us a competitive candidate. Now, the goal obviously would be for him to be overrun with applications. Fire department to be overrun with applications to where they could pick a validity. And as I said, the fire department is very disturbing to me, and I think it would be disturbing to most citizens, to know that we're reducing standards to get an employee. Where we have to take the least of the pack, instead of somebody in the middle of the pack or the best of the pack. And we've got lots of things we're going to have to look at to fix these problems. Obviously, you're never going to hire a person with several years of experience to come to here to work if you're going to start him at the bottom, or her at the bottom, it just ain't going to happen. Not going to happen in fire department, not going to happen in sheriff's office, not going to happen in any other department really. Experience matters. I ran an agency for a lot of years, experience matters. Our liability goes up, as the sheriff stated, when we have to hire people from the beginning. Unfortunately, even though, and I think Sheriff and I talked about this when we met, is he's got a contract with the people that he sends to the academy in an effort to try to get them to stay, but that can be bought out. That happens in the fireside as well, those contracts get bought out. When you see a number like $48,000, and they can buy that contract out for way less than half of that, because you're not entitled to all of that. They can buy that out, and they say, hmm, all right, they spent 48, I can buy that out for 20. We just made $28,000, they don't have to do the same thing. And they can, and it goes on all the time, what he's saying is absolutely true. Other counties go to these classes, you're in graduation, see who's graduating. I've done it myself. When I was running fire department, EMS, I'd go to the paramedic graduation, see if there's anybody over there that I might could get to come our way. Somebody was putting money into that person for them to be there. But I was hoping to get them so that I could save our county that training money. It happens all the time, I mean, this is not an anomaly or anything like that, this is a common, everyday occurrence. And unfortunately, in the state of Georgia, as well as nationwide, the number of people in public safety is declining. There's not near as many people interested in chasing the bad guy, or running into a burning building, or standing out in the cold, or the rain when it's raining, in a car wreck. There's not near as many people interested in doing that, I don't know why, but there's just not as many people interested in that. They're more interested in that job that has air conditioning all the time, or heat all the time, and pays better than what these men and women are being paid to serve in that capacity. So, we've got a lot to look at as a collective group, a lot of things to consider as we try to come up with a methodology to go forward and be competitive. We'll not change any of this until we become competitive, we have to be competitive. And competitiveness branches around that whole thing. The totality of what it takes to keep an employee. We're backing up when we're constantly retraining and recruiting. You're putting a whole lot of money into that on a regular basis. And that's the money we've got to transfer. Instead of spending it on recruitment and retraining, we've got to transfer that money in the people we already have so they'll stay. We need people that'll stay here 25 years, 30 years. You've got some back there that have sacrificed for that length of time. Because I've worked with them. They're good, solid people, and they give up a lot to stay in this county for 25 years. They bypassed several thousands of dollars that they could have had. Some of them could have probably already been retired, sitting at home, drawing a pretty nice paycheck. That's something that we're looking into, obviously, something we want to improve, so that when they get to that day here, they can rest comfortably at home after giving the majority of their life to this community. So yeah, I can concur that we have a problem, there's no doubt. And we're going to take some steps on that, we're going to go on some of that tonight, some salary steps, hopefully, that we can start to address some of that. We also have to stop the bleeding. And so those are the issues at hand right now, is trying to figure out a way now, in this time, to keep the staff that we already have. Not to keep bleeding and bleeding and bleeding and retraining and retraining and retraining, and spending $48,000 to get somebody to a point. And then somebody can buy that point for $20,000. That's throwing your money down the drain. And I ain't never been for piling my money up and burning it in a pot. So we need to make sure that we're spending that adequately. And I think that's something we can do, and a lot of that, thank goodness, is already within the budget process that we have. When you're spending that kind of money to retrain somebody, well, that'll, that in itself, in one position, will pay that increase that is needed for several bodies. So it's not like you got to go out and hunt every bit of that money. Some of it's already there, and some of it's already been spent, is being spent in areas you don't want to spend. It needs to be spent on the men and women that we have today, not on somebody we might get in the future, that might come for six months and leave. It needs to be spent to keep the good, qualified people. We all understand that we're not going to be able to pay exactly what some of these places pay. And I don't think these men and women are actually looking for that. I think what they're looking for is a competitive wage. So we have to get somewhere in the ballpark of a competitive wage, so that when they look at some of the things that we provide, and we talked about this during the insurance renewal. We're one of the best counties around with insurance, so that's a positive. That's a positive on our side. We've got to make these other areas like retirement and pay better, so that that totality of that, when that employee looks at that and they go, wait a minute, now if I leave here and I go to Forsyth, then their insurance is going to cost me yada, 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 and then out of pocket, there's so much more here, and when that is all added into totality, they'll stay. And that's what we have got to have. We've got to get to that point. And it ain't going to be easy. It's going to take a lot of looking and digging and trying to figure out how we do all that, and looking and looking at what everybody else is doing, so that in the comprehensive package that we offer, the employee, they go, that's too good to live, I'm gonna stay. And you got a lot of dedicated people. I mean, they're some people back there that I've seen, they're long in the tooth like I was. They've been here forever, they put up with a lot of stuff, and they ain't going nowhere no matter what happens. That's good, solid people. But they also, I can understand, because I haven't had them all the time, people leaving, going down to the next county for that five, six thousand dollars, I can understand that as well. They gotta live, they gotta feed their family, so competitiveness in any kind of job market. And now, you really have to be competitive, because the economy's better. It's much better. The private industry is stripping away your public safety personnel, whether it be fire department or whether it be law enforcement. So many private companies now have security, and they have things that they pay much better. You know, I don't really look much difference, whether it's fire department, or sheriff's office, or public works, or whatever it is, public safety is public safety in my mind, and I see them as one big group of people who have the same responsibility, and has to take care of the citizens of this county, and anybody who might desire to visit us. So I look at them as a totality, as one big gigantic group that has the same mission. They do things differently, obviously, they have different roles, but they have the same goal in mind, and that is the protection of the citizens of this county, whether it be the fire department, whether it be the sheriff's office, whether it be public works. And I was so glad to see public works getting added into public safety on a national level, because they play such an important role in safety. You may not think about it, but if you road your all to pieces, then your safety or citizens deteriorates rapidly. That makes more work for him, that makes more work for them. You go down the road, they wreck, next thing you know, you got people standing out there working on that when they could be doing something else. So unfortunately, Dawson County is not the same little safe town that it used to be thirty-five years ago or forty years ago. Crime has found us. Statistics will show you that there's going to be a certain percentage of crime based on the population. So every day that we grow a person, that percentage will fall in line. I know in public safety, fire department EMS, you could count on ten percent of your populate, you gotta run at least ten percent. Ten percent. So if you have twenty-five thousand people, you can count on twenty-five hundred calls minimum. Now, we're even exceeding that here, I think we're up to thirty-two hundred, something like that right there, we're a twenty-something thousand population. But those numbers don't go far, they don't go far away from that regardless of the year, regardless of how long you go back. We've got a big challenge as a group, and I fully believe that this board has a desire to do all they can to meet that challenge. So Sheriff, we'll continue to work on that, but, I mean, I don't have any question for you, because it's not really anything that I can question. I just wanted to comment that it's going to be a challenge, and we're going to have to work to address, and I will tell you personally, just from me, that I'm committed to that. And so, as I said last week with the fire department, I'm definitely committed to trying to fix and to make sure that we're not, not the bleeding county that we've been for a long time. And, because you do have a lot invested in a person, you know, and it doesn't matter who it is, or no matter which realm of public safety it falls under, there's a huge investment in that person. And for that person to leave, you have to start over again and again and again and again. I think one of the things you told me the other day, and you didn't mention it today, but I'll bring it up, is I think your guy that kinda helped with your recruiting mentioned the other day, that it took, what, three years to fill twenty-five positions? Three years to get twenty-five people? You know, and Chief Thompson made that same point. He got six people or six applicants in a year, you know, so we are definitely losing money if it takes us three years to recruit twenty-five people to fill twenty-five positions. And the sad part about that, not only is it the length of time, but the fact is, probably the majority of those twenty-five people that you hired had no training whatsoever. And then you had to train them, send them off to school, spend that forty-eight thousand dollars a person, make them the qualified employee that you need them to be. So when you start talking about twenty-five people and forty-eight thousand dollars a person, that number gets big in a hurry, and if you spend that money properly, you know, that's gonna lead to a lot better retention than what we currently have. Anyone?
Thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. I don't think I echo what Billy says. I don't think a lot of this is new. We realize the dedication that these folks have, and we realize the commitment they have to Dawson County, and the sacrifices that they make to Dawson County, it's appreciated. And I'll tell everybody sitting back there, the same thing that I told the gentleman that were in here a couple of weeks ago from fireside, is it's hollow words, but it's appreciated. And I know it's hollow words, because we're not able to just, we're not the federal government, we just create more money. We still have to have checks and balances, and we have to have ways to have revenue, to spread it out. As a matter of fact, two years ago, our budget, the majority of our expenses were spent on people. And that was a salary increase we did, which was over a million dollars, and it sounds like that's probably where we're headed again this year. We realize, the whole reason why we have a vote tonight on another salary study that costs money, is to be able to look and see where we're at, and to balance that in relation to our other communities and our other counties, and take all these factors into play in the consideration. We understand that. I mean, if we could simply write a check today and give you everything you want, it'd be done. We don't have that ability. So it's our task to balance that out. As we go through this budget cycle, again, I think we're gonna see from department heads, and I'm sure from you, the majority of the requests are gonna be for salary increases and fixed assets, things that don't fall in splosh, that we can fund out of splosh would be, you know, in our general fund, it's gonna go to salary. And that, we're always playing catch-up. We will never be, we will never be Cobb County, we will never be some of these other counties. Forsyth County, we won't be Forsyth County. Forsyth County is just under a billion dollars in debt right now. I don't wanna put Dawson County in that position. So we have to be smart, we have to be responsible with the taxpayer dollars. In the same sense, we gotta find a way to pay you guys more money, that's getting, but we gotta be very strategic, very surgical about it. One thing that I would like to see, Sheriff, if you can bring, and we did this on the fireside, they brought across a couple of options. You gave us fifteen percent across the board, I think he was ten percent across the board, but then we had A, B, and C. If we can look at a more surgical approach, or surgical proposal, that allows you to handle your most critical needs in a timely manner and work through this process, if we can have a little bit more surgical approach proposal, that'd be one thing that I would like to see, in addition to the other information you provided. I think Billy brought it up, everybody's buying our contracts out. Have we gone to Lunkin County and White and all that, bought any of theirs out? Have we been able to do that?
No, well, we need to find them to be able to do so, but right now, we're so, our dollars are basically the same as what these other places pay.
Okay, so we are the same as them?
On par with them, that's correct. You can count, it actually pays a little bit more than we do now.
Got you. Okay. Yeah, I think that's, I have a lot of questions for finance and things like that that I have in my head, but that'll come, so. Thank you, and again, thank you, all you folks in the back that are the frontline guys, that stand in the way between bad people and everything else, so thank you.
Anyone?
I just wondered if anybody ever said anything positive about Dawson County? Is anything positive ever said? I mean, and I know, I know you've got some that's been here a long time, what is, what is their reason for staying?
Again, Mr. Sheriff, I think there's a lot of great things about Dawson County and serving here. And if, this much true personal feelings, if like the chairman would say, if we can get competitive, we're not gonna swing, we're not gonna sway somebody for a little bit of money. But unfortunately, when life gets in the way, they have to make decisions. Last thing I ever thought about when I got in law enforcement was retirement. I didn't think about wages. But as you get into it, and as you grow and you progress, you get older, you start thinking about those things.
Don't you look at me like that. I saw.
I was looking weird.
Looking that way.
There's a lot of great things about Dawson County, Mr. Sheriff.
Did they ever wonder about the insurance? Because, I mean, a lot of times, that's more important than your pay. And that's, and I hear we've got a great policy, I never have taken it myself, I was afraid I'd get sick, cost the county a bunch of money. So I went with that insurance a while, and then when I got a policy, it was eleven hundred a month, till I got on Medicare, so, you know, I just, I mean, do we have anything going for us?
Well, I will question when I say this, in my opinion, in older folks, insurance matters. And young men wouldn't get in law enforcement, that's the last thing, they don't think about retirement, they don't think about insurance, they're trying to get established.
And how many of your, do you have any idea how many of your employees live outside of Dawson County?
No, I don't, I can't give that number.
So I'm wondering if they live in another county, why are they coming here? You're talking about ours going somewhere else, I wonder why we got some coming here, but you're saying we're not.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, I'd have to get you the numbers, but we do have, we might have one or two that live south of us, majority of ours outside of county, that live north of us.
And you know, I'm like, Chris, we, we're charged with public safety, and I think about that all the time, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens, so that enlies my conflict. You know, the, you know, I'm not saying they don't need it, I wish we could write a check for everything, but yet, you know, there's just so much in the, in the pot, and you've got to spread it out, so that's my conflict, you know, and spreading it out to the other, other departments, you know, because I hear everybody else saying, what about me? What about me? What about my department, you know?
We did have one resign last week.
And what was the reason?
There was some speculation about it. On this particular thing, it was shift work, again, it's difficult for folks sometimes, but he did have previous experience, and we were taking a gamble, we invested in him, bring him on board, and it didn't work out.
I guess that's the question, Sheriff, just thank you too for coming, and all the people coming through, and what you do. The forty-eight thousand that you invest, or the county invests in that person, how many of those have we had in the last couple of years?
I can give you concrete numbers, and I can take a week higher for the past, since 2012, I believe, I got to tally up those numbers, but I do have them.
I'd like to know just from 2017.
Your last couple of years.
Just the last couple of years, I don't even know, just from 2017.
I can give you those.
But I will. That money, I guess, that money's budgeted in here for recruitment and training and all that, as far as that four thousand is in your budget for training?
Yes, I didn't get you that.
Forty-eight thousand, that's in your budget for training, somebody, bringing somebody in?
Yeah, you're talking about bits and pieces of everything, you're talking about taking somebody off to.
Uniforms.
Right, right.
Vehicles.
I'll give you that from 2017, but I also need to put all of them, so I want you to see the big picture as well.
Have you ever looked within your own budget that you have to do, say, a thousand dollar bonus, if you have money that you haven't allocated or something else within, because you control your budget? Have you considered that, to look into doing, you know, one-time things?
Well, why I've been talking, because I can't give a bonus. So I don't have that authority to do so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next up, the presentation of FY20, Department of Human Services, Vienna Specialty Transportation Corporation, Donald.
Well, I don't have to put it around, Donald.
Well, you should, yes.
Good afternoon, Sheriff and Commissioners. I'm here to give us the money from a contract from FY20 from Vienna Specialty, it's our VHS contract for rides when Dawson County gets reimbursed. We, on a regular basis, we get reimbursed for every, these are for seniors age sixty and over, we get reimbursed seven dollars and seventy-five cents for every, these are for every one-way trip, and you have the wheelchair, the hourly, and the daily field trip. So like tomorrow, we're, just for example, we are going on a field trip to Amfula Falls, we're taking about forty to fifty seniors up there, for every bus and man we take will get paid two hundred dollars for all of those buses. And I think last year, we got, we, it's usually between thirty-five and two thousand dollars, it just depends on if they have any extra money and how many rides. So it's a great thing, it helps offset the cost of our transit program. And this is something that we sign every year, and I'm asking the board tonight to approve and ratify it, so we can send it back in, because the contract for the start Monday, July first.
Questions for Donald? Okay, so, this went effect, actually went effect yesterday, because twenty?
Today's Tuesday, yeah. It went into effect yesterday, July first.
Okay, so you can add that to?
Wasn't that mentioned before?
Yes.
Today's Tuesday.
Today's the same.
Yeah, okay, yes, sir.
Add that to six o'clock. Thank you, Donald.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have presentation, Board of Department, Library Board, Carol Turner, replacing Dwayne Wallace, that turned in July 2019 through June 2023. We see his impressive resume that he turned in, and so I would recommend him to you for your consideration. Next up, we have County Manager Report.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm pleased to report that Dawson County is among nineteen hundred local governments around the country receiving payments in lieu of taxes, better known as a TILT funding in 2019. Physical year 2019, Georgia will receive two point eight, one eight million dollars, and Dawson County will receive a check for twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. In short, TILT payments are made to local governments to help offset our inability to tax federal property, and we can use TILT payments for any government purpose, including emergency response in roads, so there is a little plus there for us. As you know, we have been gearing up for our 2019 Citizens Academy. Unfortunately, as of today, we have only had four people express interest in participating. With that being said, our senior staff has discussed making this year's academy a virtual one, meaning anyone would be able to participate and learn from wherever they are at any time through videos and interactive platforms that we produce. We are still in the early stages of planning our virtual components, but we do want to be sure to offer the Citizens Academy one way or another this year. So this will be a program that you can link on to, and you can actually get the presentation from each department head as if they were in the Citizens Academy themselves. So we'll be rolling that out, just as soon as we get it, get all the details worked out. Just a little project update to you, our senior center is currently beginnings of construction. The demolition of the existing maintenance building, pavilion, senior exercise equipment stations, and clearing and grubbing will have begun and will begin for the next two weeks and be completed within that timeframe. In two weeks, excavation- In two weeks, excavation of existing field number three will begin, material will be transported across the street to begin building the foundation of for the proposed senior center building pad and parking area. The fleet shop, the slab has been poured, coming up with exterior steel columns now, quite impressive, if you get an opportunity, go out, take a look at it, it's doing a great job out there. Public workshop, the footers are poured, and being poured, the support beams. Our scale house slab is poured, and the trusses should be in next week, and they'll begin construction there as well. And that completes my report.
Questions of the county manager? Thank you, sir, county attorney report.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report this time for the session.
Okay, we do need to have an executive session for potential litigation, so I'll take entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Commissioner Nix, taken by Commissioner Gaines, discuss. Here it does, please vote. No vote taken coming out of that, correct?
There won't be anything that.
All right, so we'll take about five minutes, and then we will meet in executive session. Thank you.